...pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trusty Carter?
Here.
Trusty Carter?
Here.
Trusty Grant?
Yes.
Trusty Tate?
Yes.
Trusty Todd?
Here.
Here.
I have a number four approval of minutes.
Mayor, I call for an executive session, please move matters personnel. I move that we have an executive session.
It was moved by trustee, Zupan, second by trustee Tate. Any questions? Now, please follow the roll.
Trusty Brewer?
Yes.
Trusty Carter?
Yes.
Trusty Grant?
Yes.
Trusty Tate?
Yes.
Trusty Duca?
Yes.
Happy, yes.
Okay, motion carried. We'll be back. I'm out of questions, please follow the roll.
Trusty Brewer?
Here.
Trusty Carter?
Here.
Trusty Grant?
Yes.
Trusty Tate?
Trusty Todd?
Here.
Here.
Motion carried. Approval of the minutes. I'll accept the motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for June 27, 2017. I'll accept the motion.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes with the caveat that the clerk do a, listening to a second, separate audio recording to the meeting that took place, given a question that I have with the written minutes as they stand. That's my motion.
There a second? The motion has been put before the board to accept the minutes for June 27, 2017 with the necessary correction that were recommended and put in place. Are there any questions? Now, please follow the roll.
Trusty Carter?
Yes.
Trusty Grant?
Yes.
Trusty Tate?
No.
Trusty Todd?
Yes.
Trusty Duca?
Yes.
Trusty Brewer?
Yes.
Yes.
My motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the committee meeting minutes for October 3, 2017. I'll very, I'll accept the motion.
Second?
Moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Duca. Are there any questions? Now, first?
Trusty Grant?
Yes.
Trusty Tate?
No.
Trusty Todd?
Yes.
Trusty Duca?
Yes.
Trusty Brewer?
Yes.
Trusty Carter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I accept the motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for August 14, 2018. It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Carter. Are there any questions?
Got a comment. I'm sorry about this, I didn't look it up. On page three, can you, where it says she spoke as lab paragraph? Is that supposed to be trustee Brewer? Is that it with the right? Uh, page three. I think it's something about she. Thirteen pages, page forty-four. And she said she, and then you said, you said she. Yeah, so.
Any other question? Now, trustee, call the roll.
Trusty Tate?
No.
Trusty Todd?
Yes.
Trusty Duca?
Yes.
Trusty Brewer?
Yes.
Trusty Carter?
Yes.
Trusty Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I accept the motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for August 28, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we remove these minutes from tonight's agenda. Because there are numerous issues with them.
There a second?
I move we remove the August 28, 2018 board meeting minutes from the agenda due to there being numerous issues with them that were not corrected in time before tonight's meeting.
Moved by trustee Duca, second by trustee Carter, that the minutes of August 28, 2018 be removed.
Trusty Todd?
Yes.
Trusty Duca?
Yes.
Trusty Brewer?
Yes.
Trusty Carter?
Yes.
Trusty Grant?
Yes.
Trusty Tate?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for September 11, 2018.
So moved? So moved.
Moved by trustee Duca, second by trustee Grant. Are there any questions? Now, clerk?
Trusty Duca?
Yes.
Trusty Brewer?
Yes.
Trusty Carter?
Yes.
Trusty Grant?
Yes.
Trusty Tate?
No.
Trusty Todd?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Public comments. Our questions and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of South Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak of three minutes of matization debate or counter replies with those. I will ask all questions at the end of the comments. Step up, please, state your name.
Carrie, can you assist me? Pat Couch. I can speak loudly. Since we're just coming back after a hiatus of several weeks, I don't know why these minutes were not corrected prior to tonight's meeting. I would think that they could have been, but that's another issue, so I just find a little way through with that. My big issue is, again, and I've already spoken to the chief regarding my problem with dogs running loose. Now, this particular dog has been called before this board numerous occasions. Trusty Duca, who is on our safety committee, knows about this dog. The dog is still running at large, four times in one week, about two weeks ago. They jumped my fence down numerous times, they broken my fence to try to catch their dog, and this would be very difficult, which chief and I just discussed, how to get this dog captured. Since we have no dog person to go out and capture a dog, I think we need to address this issue. For instance, last week, there was a police officer that was attacked by a pit bull on the north side of town. Now, when it's going to be affecting our police officers and they get attacked by a pit bull dog and he has to shoot the dog, something needs to be done about these dogs that are running at large. Not only this pit bull, but the one behind me is the one I'm concerned with, but there are numerous dogs every week running loose. The, the police department does not have all the equipment they need to corral these dogs, and I'm working with the chief, Rob, whatever he needs. I told him I'd buy him a noose to catch these dogs, but you've got to have a certain size noose to catch these dogs. These are big, muscular dogs. And when a police officer has to shoot a dog because it attacks him, then I think the village needs to step up and do something because of that.
One minute.
The shots being fired, we hear it every day. There are shots being fired. That's another issue that needs to be addressed in our village. And I want the chief to know, whatever he needs, if he needs some help with, from the citizens, we need some help from the public to get these dogs taken care of. It's nonsense, a village of our size, to have this many dogs running loose, no licenses, no fees paid to the village, that's revenue that could pay for those nooses. Thank you. Judy Cass? I'm here to... I'm sorry? Okay. I'm here to question the fact that somebody's going to be appointed to an official position tonight. When this person was not sworn in or done legally in the first place, how can you redo her in the second place? It takes the entire board, the entire board, to approve bringing somebody in. This was not done. And now you want to advance her even further, even though we've had questions over and over and over, and you refuse to answer them. And now you're going to appoint her to a definite position, and I have a lot of questions on that. As to why, and about the background check and all the things that you told me, not a problem, I'll give them to you. Well, as of today, I have saw any of them. None. For any of the hires. And I'm talking not just about one, but all of the hires that you had. The village board did not approve any of them. And we've gone over the videos. The videos say, I'm not lying. And anybody that wants to sit up there and accept it for what it is, is accepting lies. And that's not what this village is about. If you can't do it right, don't do it.
Linda Washington, a couple of things tonight. First of all, I want to say the last meeting that we had, because the ordinance for social media has never been adhered to, and the staff continue to go off social media attacking the residents. I stood at this podium and I went Facebook Live, which means that everybody in the entire world that has internet saw that meeting, and I am pleased to announce that I had over 3,000 views that saw that, the phone calls that have come to my house and have come to my phone because of that live video recording. If there's something going on, you try to take care of that house. I want to make it known that I have paid to the mayor's office over the last two years to ask to see the mayor. I have talked to your secretary, Mary Clark, several times, she sent me a message that I was on the phone with you. You have refused to see me over the last two years to try to bring some kind of reconciliation and work with the community for different programs that we were doing. I have also contacted the mayor's office about new programs that I'm doing. Have had absolutely no response. And some of them may be viewed very harsh, and some of these people may advise you. I hope a shame on all of you. Also, I want to say that when trustee Little Todd resigned from certification, and people asked who was going to take over that committee, we said, well, it falls on me, it falls on me. When trustee Bertie Brewer was removed from the seniors committee, and they asked what trustee is going to be over that seniors committee, we said, well, I'm going to be overseeing the seniors committee that falls on me. When trustee Jones relocated, and they asked what type of parts are wretched, we said, well, that's going to fall on me. I'm going to be doing that until I can point somebody that's going on there. Unfortunately, housing commission was delivered to the properly, uh, counter since Gary Cogan was above the housing commission. And so the village, all these committees that we had that was up and running and vital are all complete dudettes as of today. And I think that's a tragedy. I think that that's a tragedy. None of these programs are up and running like they should be. Regardless of there's an open gym, what is open gym? Gym is open and people just get there, they get a hall, they play, through super classic gyms, they have background checks. Who are these people that oversee an open gym? How does the community know about it? I want to applaud the clerk for posting the deputy registers class that's going to be at the National Democratic Library that is their public service, that residents have privilege to come and become a deputy registrar. The Democratic group of the South suburbs also posted a few other entities throughout the South suburbs. And she got stole out here on Facebook and wherever else for doing her job. I want to applaud the clerk, Mark, who will keep on doing what the people are putting you to do. Letting them know about things in the village that's going on regardless of who's hosting it. You have a great day.
My name is Ben O'Haire, and I am addressing this administration and the residents. I come to these meetings week after week and month after month, listening to the residents asking the mayor to help stop these hateful and personal attacks on the residents, who at times disagree with your agenda. These attacks come from your friends, your employees, and your own family members. My husband, Harvard Ayers, posted a rebuttal to all the negativity and hatred that continues to be posted on various social media sites against individuals who once again disagree with the mayor's agenda. Shortly after his rebuttal, my daughter called her father crying, sharing a post on social media from the mayor's own daughter. This is what was posted. Erica LaShine, I hope this option in line gets a knock, if are, if are, for real, for real. No pity for a heartless, ungrateful, half-dead MF. How can anyone, how can anyone have so much hatred as towards death to a disabled senior and a veteran? To deprive this family of the 49 years that we have shared together, there is nothing that my husband has done to justify such a horrific response. The mayor's ongoing silence to address these problems shows he is complacent to the ongoing rhetoric. I also have a copy of the media post from Erica LaShine, Murgis. No comment either.
My name is Carl Hutcherson. My wife and I live at 22513 Gates Avenue. Locker Gates or 225th Place going west to Jeffrey Avenue, there's 22 homes on both sides of the street. Over the past two years, there's stolen have been, that I am aware of, including my own house, big home break-ins, with the most recent one occurring this last Christmas Eve. And that house was also broken into just the week before, on December 14. That makes the total nine. During the first break-in of the house at 22517 Gates on December 14, my next door neighbor's house, I was stepping out my front door around 4:00 PM to take my dog for a walk. It was then that I saw two teenage males enter the end of my neighbor's driveway by the street. They were wearing the white dust masks on their faces and hoodies with the lids up. I thought that was a bit strange, but it was cold then. As soon as they saw me coming on my front door, they both took off running in two different directions. One heading up 225th Place, the other going west into West End Gates. Then three other males started to come out from the driveway side of the house. One of them immediately had West End Gates going towards Jeffrey. The other one also went up 225th Place. The third one, before he started running towards Jeffrey Avenue very fast, said to me, I have a gun. To me, the one who threatened me with a gun would agree with me about 11 or 12 years old. Then I looked up the driveway, saw a broken window, and yelled out and calling the police. At that point, one of them yelled out, are you talking to us? As he was still running away. I yelled out, I know where they lived and where they were going. Most of the neighborhood is aware of where these kids live at and or hang out at. One of the houses is on Gates Avenue, the other house is around the corner, a few houses down in Jefferson. These kids have been seen going up driveways of houses during the day when no one is home. And when they are confronted by a neighbor or someone who sees them, they say they are just looking around. I've seen them going down the sidewalks or street and taking their time standing around it all around someone's property trying to see what they can see. The next day after the break-in that I interrupted while I was walking my dog that day, four blocks away down to the Clyde and Gates, two of the teenagers that hang out or live at these houses were walking down the middle of the street, bouncing basketball, talking and laughing. As soon as they saw me and my dog on the sidewalk, they both immediately pulled their heads, pulled their hoods up over their heads and turned away from looking in my direction. The one holding the basketball would say, stop bouncing back and forth, wouldn't even look in my direction. The other one, every couple of seconds, would a very slight turn his head and look in my direction as they continued walking. At this time, I had not yet told any of my neighbors about my coming to this meeting, but every time I leave my house to run there, and my wife is worried that one or more of these kids are going to see my car going and try to break in. I'm not naming any names or addresses the people we suspect being the ones who are doing this. I do not want to have any kind of legal action taken against myself or any of my neighbors. Any of my neighbors, if I or we mention the suspects' names and addresses, when the police respond to the December 14 break-in that I interrupted, they asked me if I knew which place they fled. I told them that I know exactly which house they had gone to, and when I told the officer, he said that, yeah, we know that house. So what can be done, what, what can be or is going to be done now? Because the people on this block and maybe other blocks are wanting something to be done.
Good evening, happy new year to the board and staff and residents. First thing I'd like to say is I attended the funeral for Sandy Kazi, and I was very disappointed that nobody from the village of official capacity was there to read any type of statement thanking her for her over 26 years of service. Not only her, but her entire family. Sandy Kazi did a lot for this village. She raised most of our kids. I know my children were very, very, they spent a lot of time with the community center. It hurt, it hurt. I also see that there was no moment of silence for Sandy. For those of you who don't know, okay, there's a lot of don't. History is important to a lot of us residents, and Sandy Kazi is a piece of South Village history. She needs to be, uh, some kind of way, remembered for everything she did. There's a lot of residents who feel that the community center, the gym, should be actually dedicated to her because she is and was South Village as we know it at its finest. And second of all, before the last election, our town hall meetings held at this village hall every month by current mayor, as he was trustee. Several months ago, it was mentioned that we need to bring the town hall meetings back to South Village. At that time, you don't have a three-minute time limit. At that time, the mayor, every timed out meeting said, you can talk about anything you want, for as long as you want. And before you leave here, you will get answers, because at these meetings, we're held to three minutes. At these meetings, we, we don't get the answers that we always are looking for. At the end of the meeting, we do get some answers, we don't get all the answers. I think that we get three months before the next election, where we could possibly have a town hall meeting every month for the next three months. I don't see a problem with having that after the election, because town hall meetings are meant to bring the residents together to, to talk about the issues that we're having. We have a lot of issues in South Village. They're being swept up under the rug, and we don't act like they exist, and the next day, something else happens, and then we remember them again. The shootings, the dogs, the fire hydrants, Sandy Kazi, things that are important to the residents. When are we going to start realizing it's not just about this, it's about that? It's about 10,000 people out there. It's about 3,500 homes out there. It's about our children who don't have anything to do. And when Sandy Kazi was alive, that didn't happen. She worked with the mayor's Parks and Recreation Committee, she ran that committee. She created programs, she maintained programs, she got people to help her with those programs. She got her entire family. Everybody that got up to speak at her funeral were family members, and every single one of them talked about how hard they worked with Sandy to make our children better, to make our community better, when not one person from the village was there in official capacity. And I'm sorry, that broke my heart. I would like to see something done for Sandy Kazi. I would like to see some type of dedication for that community center gym, because she kept that gym going. Those programs stayed alive, they would be alive today if she was alive. Thank you.
Kathy Batcher, I just have a couple of questions. A month or so ago, maybe a little longer, Marva brought a gentleman here that had proposed an arts program. I would just like to know if trustee Carter has reached out to him, he was willing to work with our children for free. That sounded like such an awesome program. I'd like to know if we're going to get it started and if so, when. Second, have you hired somebody for the part-time position for the community center that you spoke about? I haven't heard any more about it, but we have been on a long vacation. Third, have you started the process for hiring more policemen? We really need policemen. I am going to come up here every week and beg for more policemen. Maybe if we had more policemen, we wouldn't have the problem of, they, they could, uh... Let me see, I'm losing my train of thought here, sorry. They could enforce the ordinances that are in place already. We have signs that say, don't walk in the street. But, we got people walking in the street, and then we had hit runs where people are killed. How about if we get more police to help these guys do what they need to do? They are being overworked and underpaid.
Mary Escoveta, I'm here also to address social media, because you, Derek Burgess, should know that I was one of your biggest supporter, and when somebody attacked you and said something about you, I was always there to defend you. So I didn't appreciate what they wrote about my friends, what your daughter wrote on Facebook about my friend. And that's not the first time he was attacked on Facebook. The first time was by your wife on the Alvinson's page. Anyway, you need to do something about that, because it's really shameful. Not only that, there have been texts to people about when they have deaths in their family, nasty texts. Those are just really just evil, and you really need to address that, even though, again, I'll say it again, you won't, because the people doing it broke the speech for you to sit up here and tell us, we can't talk about social media, but you say you can't control your employees or your family. And it's okay for them to talk about the residents, again, that puts you in that seat, and you're not doing anything for them. So, I just want to lead you with some food for thought. If you have to hurt other people in order to feel powerful, you are extremely weak... you are an extremely weak individual. And that's for your employees and your family.
Rachel Eastman. Um, I just wanted to come up today to say thank you very much to Ms., um, um, Clerk Marva Puitt for hosting, I believe you're the one who hosted the Basket and Boy. Uh, it was very lovely. Um, my family and I enjoyed all of the things in the basket. And it was just a nice, uh, get-together, and we truly enjoyed the basket. So I just want to say thank you for hosting something like that. And for all that have helped her, um, thank you so much. And it was a huge blessing for me and my family. So thank you very much and have a blessing.
Okay, um, in regards to the dog problem, and, um, that's ongoing. I mean, we do not have a dog catcher at the moment. The police officers are trying to do what they can. Um, right now, we're trying to, um, concentrate on other things without, as far as, um, other crimes that we have. But when we do see dogs, we try to find a way, um, to corral them. Um, your comments did not go on deaf ears. The chief is here. I'm sure he wrote some things down. As far as shots being fired, I don't know. I say this every week. It's a shame that we have to live in society and not just here in South Village that people, by the time we shoot other people. But every police officer in the world, they came and said, "It's South Village. It's not gonna stop shots." People are gonna shoot. It's unfortunate that it happens, but that's happened. What can we do? We hopefully, we try to deter it, but we can't stop the person if he wants to shoot at another person. Unless we're right there when it happens and who can throw the dice and figure out if a person gonna be right there when that person decides to pull the gun and shoot. Most times, when they do shoot, it's a cowardly thing. They're doing it because they don't want to confront the person, so...
We need more presence, police presence. It's a deterrent.
I did my best to, and I will continue to do my best to explain. But if you're gonna yell back and forth, I don't wanna answer people's questions.
You keep saying yes.
I'm telling you, ma'am, and I'm not going to go back. You do this every week. I'm trying to explain what it is when people came up and used their three minutes to ask questions. I'm trying to explain it to them. So I didn't interrupt anyone. I didn't interrupt not one person when they expressed what it is that they wanted the village to hear. And I appreciate it if you don't do that when I'm trying to explain what it is a person got up and tried to, um, give their thoughts and their comments. As I said before, you can have every police officer in the world be here in South Village. Will they stop a shot? No. But we try to make sure that we have police that are out there visibly, and they have there here recently. So, that being said, um, I'm hoping that, and it starts at home. Believe it or not, it starts at home. So the person, you know, the shots come from somebody, and most times, they may not even live here in the village. A lot of times, if someone comes from another place, comes in, shoots someone. It's unfortunate that happens, but those are the times we live in, where people don't take matters, they take guns and try to solve their problems. So I'm not gonna sit here and try to preach to someone about why another person shoots another person, but it's unfortunate that that does happen. Um, as far as the question about a appointee, legally appointed, I mean, if a person is in a position, that's what that means. They're filling that position until such time they're voted in by this board. So if a person, I don't know what it means to be illegally appointed. I've never heard of that, but, I mean, that comes up, so... So, um, I really don't understand that. As far as social media, I do not answer social media questions because we go back and forth on that. And it was stated that a person came to my office for two years and I didn't see them. Yes, I did. As a matter of fact, I saw him on the hallway a couple of times. They didn't say anything. So, I don't understand that part, but most times I'm here, I'm not here all the time because I have village misses and do it, take care of it for the village. But if you're coming to just criticize each and every time and make a scene, "No, I won't see you. I'm sorry, but I will not see you," if that's what you're coming for. If you come for legitimate, um, reason, there's no problem. Something that you have a problem with in your, in your home or on the street, that's no problem. I will do that. Mr. Hutchinson, I do have your statement. I will pass that on. The chief is here. He heard everything, but I'll pass it to him right now to him so he can, so he can actually see what it is. I appreciate you reprising that statement. It's very thorough. I appreciate that. It's something that we already know, but at least we have something. And it takes a lot to just shoot. It takes a lot for other residents to come forth too. The police cannot do a lot on just seeing someone or hearing someone. A lot of times, when you confront a criminal or whatever, somebody has to come before it. Somebody has to follow that plan. And if it doesn't happen, guess what? That person goes to prison. Because there's nobody there to file that complaint. So people like yourself will be willing to say, "Hey, I'm tired of it. This is what goes on, and this is what's happening." That's what we need. We need people that can do that, come forth. Because you can't be scared in your house, and you shouldn't be scared in your house.
My neighbor just moved in here in September. He's got broken eight two points before December. By the same week.
Okay, so we will, sir, we will, I promise you. And before you, um, leave, took the phone number on that paper so we could get back with you. But we will take care of that. The next one, I kinda take the exception to because this person I really did help, enjoy her. She's the one person that, when I first came to trustee, she... Every, and a lot of people were kinda against me for whatever reason it may be, had two people leave on the department when I was in charge of Parks and Rec. But this person, Sandy Kazi, was right there for me one thousand percent up until she was kinda forced out when I just put it that way. And I leave it alone, but I'm not gonna go back and forth with that. But I was at her visitation. I couldn't make the funeral because I had another obligation. But I did come there. I did talk to the family, and I expressed to the family when I was saying that no one came to the funeral. I, I, I didn't tell anybody that they had to come. That's a volunteer thing. But, um, I knew Sandy, even after she left the position as, um, Parks and Rec, um, chairman for the, um, Parks and Rec. She did start a lot of stuff in the village and kept it going. And kept it, and kept it up until she was asked to leave, so... I didn't ask for a moment of silence. I apologize for that. Like I said, I, I've known her ever since I got into the Hall of Fame in two thousand and five and two thousand and six, and, um, shoot, let's go, Clark. Um, I've been raising a lot of people's children out here and have a lot of programs before I even got here. So, yes, she was a very important person. And, um, like I stated, I wasn't at the funeral, but I did go to the viewing and visitation. And it's something, um, to look at. The community center right now is named the Pedro Center, but doesn't necessarily have to mean that there's something else can't be named after her. And I'll take that into consideration. Um, as far as the program for the person that was coming in, I haven't heard any more from that person. That wanted to be a, um, teacher, a program. And, um, as far as trying someone part-time for the public works, I'm sorry, for, uh, Parks and Recs, we do have a gentleman that's, um, doing volunteer right now, um, for the, um, gym. The application is still out there for a part-time. Um, it's, it's still posted, so I haven't, haven't gotten anything yet, but, um, we're still hoping, but right now, the gym is open Monday, but it's there Friday for the sixth. Hire more policemen. I think I stated this right before holidays came, and we managed to do that. Been working with the chief about how we're gonna make it happen. But as I said before, we're going to go into that direction. First of all, we gotta get in and take care of other things that had to be taken care of first when we start adding to it, so that's what we're at right now doing. And, um, that's about all. I'm not gonna say any more about that because, um, you know, we will be hiring, I'll put it that way. We will be hiring, um, police officers. When it's gonna happen, it's nothing happened overnight, but it's based in a good place. And also, I'm sure the clerk is gonna mention it, but, um, as far as the Christmas giveaway, it was a success. And she'll mention more of that too, and I really appreciate her, um, doing that. And, um, I was there for, for most of it, and, um, it seemed like a lot of people did come out and, um, get items that were given out today. Okay, with that being said, we go to item number six, the mayor's report. Now, a few things that I wanted to bring to the board. First thing I wanted to bring is about two months ago, we received a letter that there was gonna be an award that was gonna be given to, at the time, our village trust, I'm sorry, village treasurer. And that award did come, and the award states, "The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada present this certificate of recognition for budget preparation to Judith C. Sutton, treasurer of the village of South Village. This certificate of recognition for budget preparation presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to those individuals who have been instrumental in a government unit achieving a distinguished budget presentation award. The distinguished budget presentation award, which is the highest award in government budgeting, is presented to those government units whose budget I judge to adhere to the program's standard. This was dated November first, two thousand and eighteen." So I want to present this to our, now this is our interim, um, financial director, Ms. Judith Sutton. Okay, next item I have comes from the, um, really comes from the state and the county, and it's for expungements. Um, anyone looking for an expungement, um, they're having a class at Markham Courthouse, one hundred and sixty-third and Kenzie. Wednesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, from nine twelve. Um, this is a, and it's a program that will assist you, or assist anyone that needs to be having an expungement or a ceiling process taken care of. There's a phone number on here, and it says, "Free, please bring your wrap and disposition sheets with you." Uh, you can get your wrap sheets from, um, CP, CPD, which is called the Police Department, and the disposition sheets from the Cook County, uh, Quex Office. So, um, I have this information here. I have it on the back, and I have it at the village hall. I just got it the other day. So if anyone, you know if anyone that needs to have this done, please have them come down and start the process. It's, it's a process, but the cost of this is free. Um, the next item I have is the confirmation of the interim finance director, Judith Sutton, to become our finance director. And that's a motion. Moved by Ms. Trustee Carter, seconded by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Trustee Zupa?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carr?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Matt?
No.
Motion, Ms. Carey? With that being said, um, Ms. Sutton is now our finance director, interim partner, to take it off. Next item is, um, the force of offices of Village Quex.
And if you can please forgive me, ma'am, the court is going to be just a little bit lengthy today. Uh, because there's quite a thing that needs to be addressed. First thing that I would like to do, though, is to just sincerely thank the mayor, as well as trustee Zupa, who operated on behalf of South Village Municipality, along with our community partners, as we produced the most glorious afternoon, evening for our holiday cheer. Our people came out. Last year, they just came and thought they were gonna get their little food baskets and leave, and were just a little tad upset that we endeavored to ask them to sit, listen to some music, get some food. This time, they came ready and willing to sit and fellowship with fellow residents, and we had a marvelous time. We had a number of volunteers who just came out of the woodwork that helped us. Drills in South Chicago Heights provided sixty-five food baskets. We threw complete food baskets. And we didn't know about that until that Thursday, before it happened. Strack and Man Hill provided fifty, um, bags of food. Our community partners, our schools and our churches, we all rallied together to provide support, service and fun for a hundred and twenty-three, exactly one hundred and twenty-three of our residents and families of South Village. So, those of you who were here and participated, I do applaud you as well, and we say thank you. The only thing I would like to see, though, the next time, just, you know, marketing for anything is very, very important. You need it on the front end, and you need it on the back end. And all I'm going to ask of anyone who decides to use social media that as you write on something, be fair. Be fair. Know that I do absolutely nothing for the recognition. However, it is so disingenuous when you write on something that I have coordinated, and I'm the only name not mentioned. That's ugly. And we, as a community, must stop being ugly. Another thing that you're going to see a little bit later in trustee's this is for you, um, under accounts payable. um, under accounts payable, you will have an opportunity to see and to approve the payment for the funds that I spent under, on behalf of holiday cheer. And that's all I'm going to say about that out here. But know that at our very next executive session meeting, you are not gonna hear from me because you are unresponsive to my need of you, but I'll do that behind closed doors. While we, I'm going back to the beautiful day because I want to end this on a positive, okay? We had a young man there. And this young man, he had to have been maybe ten, eleven years old, but I'm so old now that everybody looks real young to me. But he said, "You're giving all of this food away to all of these people here. Why can't you give it to the homeless?" And so, and his lover looked and smiled, and I said, "Well, maybe if they are homeless, they would have no way of preparing this food because all of this has to be cooked." And you know what he said? "Oh, I hear what you're saying, so then why not let's do a dinner for them and invite all the homeless in for dinner." And I'm like, "Oh, you mean that's a good idea." And everybody at the table claps them too. So, a number of people have already agreed that they would assist if we were to do a dinner for those who are not just homeless, but less fortunate as well. So, we thought that maybe we would do that for Thanksgiving, and then at Christmas time, still have the Christmas baskets as well. Now, you guys have almost a whole year to assist me and the village and the other community partners when planning it. Don't sit on us this time. I will be calling on the senior committee also because they did a very nice lunch or dinner not too long ago, so we need to partner and bring you in as well. That ends that. Now, let me talk about election authority and the updates for that because that's what's going to really take us some time. And so, I'm gonna try to do this in five minutes, I promise this to you. In terms of my functioning as the election authority, know that the candidates filed for office, all about their paper. We had absolutely no objections to any of the petitions, so I applaud all of you for allowing people's effort to maintain itself and to let the people decide who they're going to vote for, opposed to us other people trying to knock them off the ballot. So, you're to be applauded. The calendar for the upcoming election is on the village's website under the tab for Village Clerk, but I did, you know, I'm just a surfer for you guys, so I raised some copies and they're in the back too that's gonna lead you day by day in terms of, uh, what's going on between now and the April 2nd election. Uh, know that there is a two process that's required for me to certify the ballots. I have certified all of you who are running for office for the first prong of what they're asking for. The last one has to be done, um, I think on the 24th. It's the same document, and, uh, I just have to submit it again to make it an official document. Right now, yesterday, I had to file an unofficial one. Uh... One of the responsibilities of the election authority, and that is the person that's representing our municipality, is to promote voter registration and to make certain that all of our residents are informed, educated, active participants in our electoral process. I'm going to do that job. I'm going to do that. And so, even though I just don't see where and how I can do a deputy register training to get our people in Saw Village recommissioned because everybody's commissions across the state of Illinois expired November the 30th, so we all have to be recommissioned, and that will carry us from December 1st of 2018 through 2020. However, there is a deputy register, uh, training being planned on January the 31st at the library. I'm gonna ask that you go ahead, dig around, who you need to communicate with, and if you were a deputy register, you are one, please get recommissioned so that you can lead voter registration drives and assist people however they are needed. Even though I cannot conduct a voter registration before April 2nd, and I know that I just really can't, I will work on deputy training for next year. However, I do plan to do a host of voter registration here. Uh, I want to remind the candidates that there is a candidate's forum being planned for March 16th. I'll give you a heads up. Not certain if it's going to be here or at Prairie State, but please mark your calendars because we want to hear your platforms and what your plans are as you are promoting yourself to surface. A while back, and a few times now, I have asked about an election candidacy policy for village hall. I know that I've asked for it at least twice, if not three times. I am appealing to trustees to provide that in so that we know exactly what's permissible here in the village. We need to be consistent. I don't want to do anything, I don't want to see or allow anything to take place that is outside of a policy that you guys were charged with developing. So can you help me with that? I greatly appreciate it. Another thing that I need from the trustees, it's that time of year in where you have to fill out your statement of economic interest, but I have until February the 1st to send your information to Cook County Clerk's Office. So if you are a new hire or in a new position, um, I need your name, address, phone number, and we're not talking about 2180121701 or whatever. We need your home address and your home phone number and your home email because if you do not fill it out on time, they need to be able to contact you so that they can get that little fifteen dollars if you are late completing the paperwork once they send it. And so, if you're no longer here, they would not be able to get it. Does that make sense? Uh, last thing, I would truly like to thank trustee Beth and trustee Todd, trustee Zupan and trustee Todd for your assistance with getting these minutes in a manner that is suitable and truly reflective of the meetings that we had on those particular days. I truly appreciate you and thank you. And mayor, Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Village engineer, Mr. Tim Sarnik.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. We are revising the contract documents for the elevated tank riser replacement project to be rebid in February. And then, secondly, we're also nearing the completion of the design for the I-394 water main crossing replacement project. This project should be ready to bid in late February or early March. And that completes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you remind us, uh, Mr. Sarnik, where these funds are coming from to, uh, the design of I-394, these funds are coming from?
Those are TIP funds.
TIP funds? And approximately how much? TIP four, right?
No, it's TIP two.
TIP two?
Uh, and approximately how much? I think it's one hundred and fifty thousand?
For the, uh, departments, finance, and administration, Ms. Judith Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Uh, the team has been working diligently to close the books up to December, and we expect to be done before the end of the month. And as I close the books, I will be meeting with, um, the mayor as well as each department head to review where we stand compared to prior. In addition to that, the prior year audit is in process. The auditors are awaiting the meeting minutes, so I'm sure they'll be very pleased that, um, we had so many meeting minutes approved today. And they've been working directly with the village clerk on this. Another item to note is that we continue to move forward on automating our processes. Since October, we've had three students working with us from Bloom Township. These three students have been helping us to digitize some of our records. They have been digitizing the 2017 invoices as well as the business licenses and contractor licenses. They've also been learning office skills such as helping to answer the phones as well as, um, filing documents and other such responsibilities. And we've been very fortunate to get three outstanding students who are responsible and eager to learn and eager to do more. In addition to that, we've been streamlining our daily balancing process where once it took an hour to balance each drawer, it now takes fifteen minutes to balance each drawer. Uh, where once it took half a day to combine the balancing of all the drawers, it now takes approximately an hour to balance in the morning. Um, so we continue to move forward on that front. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I've got a quick question. First of all, can I have a copy of the report? But I noticed that we're not getting our reports like we used to. Um, the bill of usage summary, the AJ report, cash balances. The last time I received anything was the end of November. And that used to be sent to us, emailed to us, like, twice a month. So can I get copies of what we have from November forward? Well, the last one I have is November 30th, so whatever we have forward from there. Okay.
I have a, uh, question. Uh, Ms. Sutton, um... Can't hear you. Well, I haven't said anything yet, but, uh, we just recently got a check. Well, I recently got a check from, uh, Chase Bank, and the money was, uh, for the cipher that we generally give for trustees every, uh, month. Uh, and that, uh, money was drawn off Chase Bank. Can you explain to me how, do we have account for Chase Bank?
No, we do not.
Well, how did we, uh, how did you get, well, where's the money coming from? Was the money deposited to Chase, and how did the money come, how does it come about when you get to Chase?
ADP, uh, has a relationship with Chase Bank. So we transfer the money to ADP, and then ADP, um, pays or has that drawn down for each employee.
That was part of our trustees' agreement to?
Absolutely. That was part of the agreement with ADP.
So every month, we're gonna be moving money to, uh, Chase Bank?
Every pay period.
Every pay period?
Yes. Not, I'm sorry, not to Chase Bank, to ADP.
To ADP?
Yes.
Okay. Well, uh, I did get a AJ report because I asked for it today, but on the AJ report that you provided, uh, is dated, uh, January of 31st, uh, there's no, um... On this, there's no, uh, there are only two payments on here, and it doesn't show where it was paid, or anything was paid on the AJ report.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Let me, let me switch back to you. Police, uh, are a, um, are Mr. Carroll run, so as soon as this gets approved, all of those will be wiped out. Okay, so we got a report that doesn't give us any information. Uh, secondly, uh, one week, uh... If I'm not mistaken, we generally approve payroll, I mean, accounts payable every, uh, pay period?
Yes.
But we got this, um, accounts payable, and the money's already been distributed.
For accounts payable, it has not?
I, I didn't get it, I just got the check for...
You got it out of payroll. You did not get it out of accounts payable. None of the accounts payable listed in here gets distributed, gets signed until this, till the trustees approve this.
Okay. So in that case, then, at this point, do I ask you about, uh, accounts payable?
Absolutely.
Trustee, I have a question. Did you make a claim that you got in the AJ report dated January 31st?
It's dated January 31st, 2019.
It's actually dated as of the date I run the report, and it reflects all of the outstanding invoices as of that pay, as of that date. So what it tells you is what's outstanding that has not been approved yet by the trustees. And that was the way it was designed from the beginning that, um, that has been given to the trustees for, I don't know, maybe over a year now, prior to even me being here. So that reflects everything that was input into the system that has not been approved by the trustees. Once you approve it, if I run it the day after you approve it, it's gonna be back down to zero. So it's a very important report with very important information that tells you what's outstanding. And that's exactly what an AJ report is supposed to do.
My question's for the, uh, accounts payable report. On page one, I don't know if they gave me a copy? Okay, I just need to, uh, generally, uh, on place for community bank, where you pay the five thousand dollars, is that for two cars or how many cars is that for?
That's for the, the loan on the cars, both the police cars and the administration cars. Um, the other part of that payment, this is just the portion for the administration cars. The other portion of that payment is under the, um, let me see.
It's on page, uh, five. So we pay?
Yes, yes.
Pay two for the drug seizure fund?
Yeah, the drug seizure fund, sorry.
And one for the, um, administrative?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And again, we have not paid it. It will not be paid until it's approved by the trustees, and then I will cut the check and send it to the bank for payment.
All right. Uh, on, um... On page three, it says Village of Lynnwood, and we paying a rental fee in firing range in amount of a thousand dollars?
That's an agreement that the police chief has made with the Village of Lynnwood to be able to have, um, usage of their firing range. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, um, Chief Malcolm?
Uh, yeah, currently, um, officers are using the private ranges. We're driving all the way to Joliet to, uh, qualify a new train. This way, we'll be right next door. That thousand dollars covers, uh, the next two years.
Two years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. There's, um, I forgot what I looked at. That must be on the AJ report. On the AJ report, I don't know where I saw it, but they're paying for airbags. I have to skip over that because I don't have the, the note here for it. Like, I appreciate you. And then, I want to say, um, you're here. We appreciate your help whatever you did, but, uh, I would like to know when we're gonna start getting some reports.
I will, uh, I will back on that instead of challenge.
Well, I understand it's been a challenge, but, uh, we have the task of, of course, way since August. And how are we supposed to make informed decisions if we can't get reports? I understand it's behind your head, but we need to do something about us. We are supposed to block our, we're getting out of the money, but, uh, how can you make informed decisions if we don't get any reports?
Right. And I haven't been in this position since office, so that would've been the previous, uh, finance director. So, I understand that. I just want to make sure that I clarified when I started, and it was not in office. So, um, I will, you know, we've had staff turnover. I think that everyone recognizes that. I do think that we're putting in place the right processes going forward, and we are prioritizing, um, so I understand that there's a, a good need... So I understand that there's a good need for information and that will be taken care of.
You know, I don't want to, but we've been promised that and promised that since, I don't know, forever, but we just, you know, we just don't get what we need in order to do that, so.
Well, you've got the information that you previously got from the previous finance director, so I'm going to be happy to put that up again, because that's something that you have received.
We'll see.
Fire Department, Captain Dennis Sennowich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the period from December 5th through January 6th, we had 28 calls. This is one of the lowest numbers we've had in a long time. We thank you residents for their fire consciousness. Again, the residents did keep our red. The reason that we hung on this station was the red lights stayed red throughout the holiday season, which meant that we had no house fires during that period. So again, thank you to all the residents. Our ISO rating has come in. We went from a four to a three, so that is a great improvement. We would encourage residents to check with their insurance companies. The ISO rating affects your insurance rates. So because our rating has improved, your insurance rates may go down. So again, check with your insurance. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Ryan Kreid. Ryan, could you please stand? Ryan was a member of our department for many years. He joined the military and now he has returned. He would like to be sworn in again to return to the Fire Department. So at this time, I would ask the clerk to please swear in Ryan Kreid to the Fire Department. And I will conclude with this one.
Ryan Kreid. Just that one, just quick, that I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
The United States?
The United States.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois?
Of the State of Illinois.
The laws and ordinances?
The laws and ordinances.
Of the Village of Saw Village?
The Village of Saw Village.
And that I will?
And that I will.
As a member of the Fire Department?
As a member of the Fire Department.
Saw Village?
Saw Village.
Protect?
Protect.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
The lives?
The lives.
And property?
And property.
Of the citizens of our village?
Of the citizens of our village.
That I will?
That I will.
As a member of the Fire Department?
As a member of the Fire Department.
Respond?
Respond.
And give my efforts and services as a fire fighter?
And give my efforts and services as a fire fighter.
Odey the mandates of my officers?
Odey the mandates of my officers.
And serve with loyalty?
And serve with loyalty.
And do this for the Saw Village Fire Department?
Saw Village Fire Department.
Yep, next, Police Department Department Chief, Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the period of December 12th, 2018 through today, the police department received 853 calls for service. During the same time period, the police department made a total of 15 arrests. One case of interest, on the 30th of last year, at approximately 6:40 PM, we responded to a gunshot victim in the 22, 22300 block of Clyde. We weren't able to determine exactly where it originated, where the actual incident occurred, which was going in the 1700 blocks of Trail. The victim was treated for non-life threatening injuries. Investigators are still investigating, there's some followings of the leads from that. That is my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director?
I have a question. Officer White, I understand you just made a MOU in regards to the prisoners, but I don't remember, did we, you called them, maybe I just don't remember. Suppose we don't have this $800,000 fund, suppose we don't have any prisoners for that much, do we still have to pay them that much? Or is it just, you know?
It will reoccur every month.
Regardless of how many?
The chances of us not having prisoners? We're rescuing, nothing else, we're not rescuing.
Yeah.
I'm a backup committee Emergency Management Agency Director, Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Last month, for the whole entire month of December, EMAs responded to 26 calls of service. We had three gas leaks, seven accidents, five five alarms, one search, which was a successful search, person returned home. We had one car fire, we had assist to Crete, assist to Illinois State Police, and assist to Cook County Sheriff's Police on three occasions. We did a funeral escort, one CO alarm, and one odor investigation. So far, the month of January, we responded to four calls of service for two accidents, one dryer fire, one CO alarm. As you can hear, tonight, there's been a lot of high winds. We're under high wind advisory till 11 o'clock this evening. Make sure your stuff is secured at your house, otherwise it can blow around. Thursday, the 10th, we have our monthly SMART meeting with all the EMAs, it's going to be hosted by Rich Township. Saturday, April 13th of this year, Saw Village EMA has been invited to the Sixth Annual EMA Training Conference, that's going to be held over in Hanover Township, there is a fee for the attendees. And Hanover Township has some upcoming training events set up with FEMA starting in February. There's going to be a tornado awareness. March, there's going to be a fire service vehicle operation course. May, there's going to be a routine emergencies, emergencies where they have different scenarios. May, we're going to have a standard awareness. And in October, we're going to have a winter weather preparation. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few items here since last year. We had a water main break at 2045 218th Street. Come to find out, it was a saddle at the house that's the service line connected to the house itself, the saddle rotted away. In the process of digging that one to do the repair, the one next to it from the house across the street wasn't in the same condition, so that was repaired at the same time. This is an ongoing problem on the north side, all the cabs are eventually going to fail, so we will be doing a lot of work on that set of town. Staff also repaired the B box located at 21847 Clyde, was to repair the house, the key valve that had been replaced by a resident. Also, we had some questions and some complaints from the last board meeting about some leaf pickup and some of the program that was going on. The weather caught us in November, so it pushed us behind. We had some other emergencies that pushed us behind. But we did get the Republic Services to come out, two more days in the end of the year and once in the beginning of this year. And all sections were completed and the sweeper made her final pass through all those sections. So any files that are put out now, they have to be right back or they may receive a ticket. Staff will be taking down the Christmas decorations in the next week. With the wind here, we may not be up there doing it, but it'll be in the next week. The tree is left, we did take down three here this morning. Public Works staff has also been doing a lot of in-house work from the Fire Department, from Village Hall here, both works, plumbing lighting, some heat work, some cleanup. We also, on December 22nd, had the carpet cleaned in the building here, so if anybody looks around and notices, a lot of stains are gone, if they can find anything, please let us know and we can have another pretreatment done. Staff has also been out since the last report and in this year, they've been doing a lot of pothole patching with the warm weather conditions, potholes on the streets right now, heat cars are hidden in open area. That tends to open up the pothole area or any soft here in the road and it creates a pothole. So they have it on the north side and the south side of town and they have done some work in the industrial park, pace center. These were the complaint areas. Also, staff has been out in the last week, they are starting to cut down the trees in January here. We're going to try to do our best to get as many good days we have here, they'll be cutting down all the ash trees or those dead trees. We have cut down three, 22432 Strossburg, 22452 Gates, 22455 Gates. We will continue as weather allows and time allows and just decide. With the wind going on tonight, we're definitely going to have some branches out of the trees, so we will have to take a look around town and see how the complaints come in, whether we'll post on the marquee for a special pickup, if anything is major. If not, we ask residents that they don't have to put it at the curb, please just stack it in a pile, wait until the first pickup in the spring. Staff members also have been picking up tracks, it seems to be an ongoing problem, not sure if it's garbage cans, garbage trucks, residents or whatever, but at this point right now, it seems like we're doing it on a regular basis. On 223rd Street and Torrance Avenue, a lot of garbage, not sure again what's coming, but please close the lids on your garbage cans and please dispose of it properly, not on the street. We've had some issues with some streetlights, we're currently working on some, I would call it easier working stuff, the overhead or underground type stuff, the underground wiring is going to be a little more difficult to take care of because there's a lot of obstacles. But we have repaired four streetlights at this point. One is 23rd Street and Torrance, that was the arm and the light that fell off in a windstorm, that's been repaired. 22321 Murphy, that was a rodent pole at the ground, that pole's been replaced and everything's been put up and the light is working. 22233 Brookwood, same thing, the pole rotted at the ground, broke off, pole been replaced, light is active. And the last location is Clyde and 218th, right in front of the park over there, during the windstorm, the arm ripped out of the pole, the pole, arm has been replaced and the light is active. Last item is, staff is preparing the three air strippers at the main station to be cleaned, it's the first time since they've been installed, they are actually in pretty good condition right now. They will be offline during this clean process, but we have to take them apart, we had to buy some parts to do that and those are, parts are ordered and some of them have come in. So in the next few weeks, we'll be starting that process. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Development Director, Duncan Woodwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Happy New Year to all. Mayor Burgess, Village Engineer Jim Zarneck, Public Works Director Kevin Weller and I met with Cook County Department of Highways and Transportation, the Illinois Department of Transportation, South River Mayor's and Managers, and the engineer from Gas and Wash this afternoon to discuss the future improvements at Saw Trail and 394. We are coordinating this effort, as multi-jurisdictional projects tend to move slower and can fall off track. Margot Transportation has submitted plans for expansion, which are currently in review with the Building Department. As this was a jurisdictional project, the MWRD issued a permit on the project, the Village Engineer Jim Zarneck has agreed on the project to proceed. All liquor licenses have been renewed and approved before January 1st. A notice was also posted at the front office that the application for reactivity permits will increase to $75 effective February 1st. As you know, the board voted in December to increase this. This increase will help with the village's effort in raising our property maintenance standards. We made an application to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for another $75,000 grant to help with demolition of some homes in the village for this year. The village has not drawn down all of the funds from the 2018 grant, however, our grass cutting program will continue with our current contract under the terms of the original contract, so those terms will continue moving forward, we don't have to relet that project. We have adequate funds available on the grant from 2018 to cover this year's grass cutting effort. I will be meeting with Jim Zarneck and Director Weller to discuss upcoming investment grant application and see what kind of projects that we might have eligible for that grant in the next round. We have posted a position for an assistant to replace the part-time position vacated in the Building Department in 2018. The individual will provide administrative support and will be responsible for, among other things, assisting with activities within the department. Anyone interested can submit a resume for consideration to Village Hall in person or online at hr@sawvillage.org. Final note, which was not on my report, I just wanted to point out that we will be discussing at our next committee of the home meeting, re-putting the RFQ out. As you know, we only received one response and we would like to receive at least three, so we can proceed with that. So we'll be redoing that whole thing next week that we've worked on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Question?
Sorry? The RFQ you're talking about is in relation to?
I'm sorry.
The RFQ that you're speaking about is in relation to?
Oh, I'm sorry, the RFQ that we put out was for the logistics center engineering study, so for the investing book grant.
Okay, so the question I had though was, as you were talking about the remaining funds from his past summer's grass cutting grant and what's left for 2019's grass cutting, are we going to put a new RFQ out there for this coming summer to hopefully get more responses and potentially get a new or different audience of landscapers in response to maybe get a different landscaper this year?
Right, the original contract called for an extension of up for an additional year. If that's the board's pleasure, we can do that and I would recommend we do that now.
Yeah.
If that is the board's pleasure, we can move forward with that. If anyone has any reasons why they want to do that, then let me know and I'd be happy to put the RFQ together, we can discuss that at our next committee meeting next week. But I'd like to move sooner on that rather than later, so we're not starting late in May, we're starting at the end of April or around that time.
Can we put it on next Tuesday's agenda then?
To discuss.
Yeah.
Okay, question. You've indicated that the mayors and managers, they had discussions on future approvals at Saw Trail and in Illinois 394, what kind of approvals are, have you allowed to get on that?
Well, what we're going to be doing is working in collaboration with the Illinois Department of Transportation and the Illinois, or excuse me, the Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways to look at and evaluate and do a study. So as that is a state and a Cook County highway, they would be taking lead on that project as the village would not. So we're trying to coordinate it because we see that there are some definite needs that are there now and will be in the future.
So the money, there's going to be some power wash, we won't be using any of the Saw Village money. I mean, what you do is when the study goes through?
Right, so Saw Trail, as you know, is a Cook County highway. 394 is a state highway. So both of those have no jurisdiction, you know, of the village other than the fact that they're in the village and affect, you know, our businesses and residents. So any money that would be coming for those studies would be coming from those jurisdictions on Saw Trail. Either state or Cook County.
Okay. Before you guys go, those that gave reports, you should kind of get to make sure the clerk gets a copy of your report if she didn't already have it. Thank you. Everyone that didn't give a report, give her a copy. Our reports to trustees, standing committees, and comments, Public Service Committee, trustee Reddy Brewer.
Mr. Mayor, and to the members of the audience, I require, according to the bill of usage safety statement that I got from December 1st through December 31st, we had about a little over $2 million standing there. However, because we can't get any reports, we don't, well, I should say, I don't, I we don't, well, I should say, I don't, I can't determine what's being paid by the employees, their fringe benefits or either their overtime. We need to know what bills are gonna be paid. I understand there was a problem with getting the Village and Use the Safety Statement, but if we got over two million dollars with a balance of only five hundred and seventy-four thousand left, that means that something had been used in there. So we should be able to have reports on to tell us what's been used in the water fund, sewer fund and utility fund. And since we can't get that report, we can't make really honest decisions about the kind of things that you need to be looking at without reports. That's why I want to emphasize the point that we need to start getting those reports in so we could make informed decisions about what's going on with the finances. Anytime people say that they got over two million dollars in the water fund with only five hundred and seventy-four thousand left, something's been used in there and we need to know what it is. And we should have a breakdown of what these items, a detailed ledger on what's been used out of the water fund. That's a very important part on how our finances should go. Understand that we're using a lot of the money. We can't tell if it's been transferred or anything, any fund transfers, because we don't have that information. So I, I, I want to put it out there because I've been trying to get information like that since August. But we need to know what's going on with our finances and we can't get that information unless somebody gives us a report. So I understand that we have new people, but you got to think about it, you know, how can we make informed decisions if we don't have any financial data? And that's the only thing I want to comment on. So I mean, I can't really make a decision because one of the reasons I asked for all this to work because we're thinking about the money that was given to raise the sewer rates. I don't know how much money's in there. Can't get the report. So you might want to, you know, you want to look into what's going out there, what we're doing with the finances. I trust me, I don't know. That's the end of my report.
Mr. Mayor, it's Brewer.
That's.
I'm sure.
That's public service. That's part of my job. Part of my public service. And one of my things is, I want to know what he is and what he did this, the different projects done.
Trustee, in regards.
And, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I want to have a question.
Mr. Mayor, you don't have to debate with me. That's my, my report and my comment. So, you know.
But you made a statement.
That's mine.
That you couldn't get and I was trying to comment on what you made, the statement that you made. So you're saying that you want, are you saying, trustee, that you want to say and then we can't, I can't answer your statement?
I didn't ask you for a statement.
You didn't ask.
I asked you for a comment. I said, you know, we can't get this report. We need the reports to make an informed decision.
So you don't want me to, you don't want me to comment on your?
No, all I want is the reports, you know. I don't want no debate or.
Budgeting side of that committee, trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say congratulations to Judy on that award. Takes a lot of work to do that budget each year. And I think the last time we did get that award was like over fifteen years ago. I do have a question for you. What happened to that, that bushless, those department heads? Like, did they ever get into you? Did they put something together? I think you said the police chief or Capitol Weller was supposed to do something. Did you ever get?
The, I just got the police and I'm waiting on the numbers from ESAs and everything else has been turned in. So we will be meeting with that and I'll let you guys know what the money is, how much money they're talking about, and I'll let you know where and how it's gonna come and where it's gonna come from. As far as the list is concerned, it's like budget. They're asking a vast amount of money for the departments to do whatever. So it's up to the board to grant or not grant whatever amount it is that they're looking at. And if we can go over the amount for each one of the departments that are looking for money to upgrade their departments that haven't had it done, I can say in the last ten or twelve years. So, but yes, that list is, I'm waiting for one more entity. Kirsten gave me what he wanted, but it never had any prices on it. So I, I'm waiting to find out what that is and then I present that to the board and we'll do it at committee.
And then also I just want to let everybody know, committee meeting on sixteen, and this meeting I plan to talk about a plan that I want to kind of have for the expected revenue that we'll receive from the gas and wash. Just a few ideas, I'll go back to committee and then hopefully bring it to the board later.
So you want to have a presentation?
No, 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 I'm just, this is my committee meeting. And I'm just saying.
Oh, it's your committee? Okay, it's your, it's your meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Just.
The quick question.
On the agenda for the expected revenue we plan to receive from the gas and wash on three-ninety-four Sock Trail.
You're gonna talk about it at your?
Committee meeting.
At your budget and plan.
Yes. That is my report.
Right.
Trustee Grant, I just have a quick question. Have they done a six-month review on our budget? Usually around halfway, we go through the budget to make sure they're on track.
So Finance Director says that by the end of this month, she'll have November, November end, December close. She'll come to the, she'll have a meeting with the mayor, the department heads, and she'll come to the board. That committee meeting is, you know, kind of where we stand at the end of this month hopefully. So we can see where we stand through December.
Okay, thanks. Actually, I was asking her that same question earlier this evening and she was targeting early February committee meeting to have that discussion with us.
So trustee Grant, she's gonna provide us with some reports?
Right, so she'll give us a snapshot of where we stand, the budget was, the actuals through the month of December. She'll have December's close by then. And she'll present to us kind of where she stands and how we look for the rest of the time period, the rest of our fiscal year.
Okay. Housing and Government Relationship Committee, trustee Tate. Okay, Ordinance Review Committee, trustee Liddington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report for the ordinance review. We're not scheduled to have a meeting actually this month because the month is basically, we usually do it the first Monday. But we really have nothing as far as ordinances right now to review. And that ends my report. But I have a quick comment. I see back on the agenda, and Mr. Mayor, I've asked you several times, when it comes to community outreach, can you please amend the ordinance so that it reads community outreach?
Better problem.
Right. I know, I see you don't have Parks and Recs on there, so I assume we no longer have a committee for Parks and Recs. So we want to amend that ordinance. And also the other comment I have, I know, Madam Clerk, you had stated that you wanted to talk to the trustees in executive session, but I'm one of the trustees that do respond to your emails. So I don't want people to think that none of us respond because we do. And I just wanted to make that clear. And you're welcome for the minutes because I do sit down and I do read them. And that ends my comment.
Okay. Public Safety, trustee, where's your partner?
The police chief snuck away on me before I could pin him down. But I just want to let everybody know that from my perspective, his honeymoon is over and I've actually reached out to him to find out our committee, oh, he is still here. See, he's only escaped me yet. Our committee generally has met the first Wednesday of every month at six P.M. here in Rotunda, for those of us who have been there for those meetings. And so I've reached out to him to say, okay, since your honeymoon is over, is that time good for you or do we need to reconsider our meeting times? So he and I are gonna have a chat about what time works for him. And he's shaking his head. He's like, yeah, he acknowledges. I have hit him up about that. So once he and I can pin down what time is best for him, we're gonna figure out if that's the right time or if we need to come up with a good, a new time for the committee to meet and then do a reset on the committee and then start picking back up and start to pick up with our meetings again in February. So next meeting I will have a time and date, whether it's the first Wednesday or a new time and date for everybody. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, Parks and Recs slash Community Outreach, we will have to work on that here soon, very soon that we can give that change or an amendment to say Community Outreach. Anyway, report from trustee Ronald Carter.
I have to play a bit of this.
Okay. Reports to committees and commissioners, Senior Advisory Committee Chairman, Mr. Emmett Farman.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. First of all, happy to do you, everyone. Really helpful report. Today, just want to let everyone know we are having our first senior advisory council meeting of the year on this Thursday, five o'clock in Senior Center. And all of us welcome to attend. And just want to give a big applause to our clerk, Walruff Pruitt, for that holiday cheer. And we look forward to working with you on that Thanksgiving weekend. All right. Thank you all.
Mr. Farman, are you, is your board filled? Are you still looking for board members or?
Now, our board will, not quite all. We have an internal vice chairman right now. The rest of the positions are filled. But, so we are gonna be actually putting in a permanent vice chairman, a permanent vice chairman, so within the next couple of months.
Okay. Right.
Mr. Farman, do you need one more?
One more calendar?
You don't want to have two.
Oh, there's another one there. Okay, new business. I accept the motion to approve Council's payroll, dated one January eighth, two thousand nineteen. I accept the motion. I'm sorry. In the amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, a hundred and eight dollars and ten cents.
So.
Remove by trustee Grant, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Mayor, page one, we have all these expenditures from Amazon Business in an amount of three hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents. It seem like every pay period we have, we spend a lot of money on supplies. And do we have any idea why it's, it seem like it's costing a lot of money for Amazon Business for supplies?
I mean, we, this is for supplies, not just for the stuff. I mean, office supplies are all open, so three hundred and ninety-five dollars in a month. I don't know what, I can't attest to that because it says office supplies, so in front office and office supply. So.
Do we know what we find?
Yes, 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 yes. I mean, I know, obviously the receipt, but I'm sure the receipts are there and it also shows what was being brought, yes.
Okay, well, we don't, I mean, we get, this is not a, these receipts or anything like that, but I can get it, copy it paper. So I'd like to.
What do you mean you can't get it?
There's none out there. Then when I go use the copy machine, there's nothing in the machine, in the Xerox machine.
The copy paper should be right there and. Oh, okay, I was just hoping it ran across from the copy machine, ran over to the, the whole machine. That's what I'm getting.
Okay. And also, my second item is I still, my, I'm so sorry. The salary for, for the amount for Dr. Stroud in an amount of two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six thousand fifty cents, and also the amount for seventeen hundred dollars for union negotiation would be removed. These two things, Dr. Stroud has never been approved by the board and I thought we under mitigation right now. So I'm wondering why we're still paying for union negotiation when we under mitigation. So I'd like to know what's going on with that. And the third thing I want to know about is Andrew Vaughn, they charged him a hotel expense for two hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents. Can you tell me if that's for?
What is that under?
It's on page three.
What is it under?
John Vaughn police department. He must have some kind of judgment.
He must have, I think he went to a seminar.
Okay.
And the bill was paid for. As far as Dr. Stroud, I don't know why you keep saying every week that she wasn't voted in. That was last year. And as far as union negotiations, that's ongoing. We have three different, one thing that you, aspect you're talking about is just one of the many negotiations that are ongoing. We have two different, three different unions, brother, that we have to deal with. So.
She's gone, she's not having mitigation, she's not under mitigation.
Mitigation is one particular, one.
Operation, I'm sorry.
One particular thing.
Which, which one is she doing?
It's one particular operation that she's going through and that's, and that's deliberate to this part.
Okay.
I'm not going to talk about what it is, but it's deliberate.
Okay, on page four, the annual air pack inspections. Can you tell me how many air packs were inspected?
No, I can't tell you that because I don't know how many air packs it was that was, they were dropped.
So these are new ones?
These are new air packs that happen to be done even so often. And you do know what air packs?
Yeah, I know, I know what this report, this says they're doing inspections. So I'm wondering why they're new while we're doing inspections. They're new.
Any other question?
I just have a comment. And it's come up and I brought it up several times. And it has to do, trustee Brewer says that we did not vote for Dr. Stroud. We did, but we didn't vote on seventeen point four or five hours. I provided you with proof of what we voted on. When I have my paperwork, I keep all my paperwork together, so I know what we voted on. And we only voted on seventeen hours. There was nowhere in there that it said six thousand dollars. Now, I know you provided me with some information. I know that Dr. Stroud probably typed that up because that's not what we have in our packet.
Yeah.
And if I have to show you again, I'll be more than happy to provide you with what we voted on. So when trustee Brewer's saying we didn't vote on, and I think what she's meaning is we did not vote on seventeen point four or five hours. And that's the end of my comment.
Okay. Did you look at the rest of that sentence that it say approved or approved by the mayor?
I will show you. Never says anything about six thousand dollars for seventeen point four five.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I said.
So in other words, then when we voted on seventeen hours on that statement of work, then you could go in and you could just change that. Is that correct?
It said, it said, it never said seventeen point four five and I didn't.
No, sir, it doesn't. But I will give you the information.
All right. Any other question?
Don't bother that.
Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
No.
Trustee Fuqua.
No.
Motion carried. I read the loop. I, I, I do first. Resolution established the two thousand nineteen dates and tabs in official meeting to the Sock Village Corporate Authority. I accept the motion for that resolution. Move by trustee, blue pile, second by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zuphan, yes. Trustee Brewer, yes. Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Motion carrying. An ordinance establishing an infomaniating program to change the mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the fire department for services provided or rendered for the Sock Village Fire Department. I will take the motion. Moved by trustee Carter, seconded by trustee Zuphan. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Zuphan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I will attend a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Sock Village and Lenwood Police Department for the housing of prisoners.
Say.
Moved by trustee Carter, seconded by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Zuphan, yes. Trustee Brewer, yes. Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Motion is carried.